A meeting is open. And it's going to be an unusual meeting because it's the first meeting, I think, at least the first in many years, where the entire agenda is for the planning board and whatever public decides to attend to learn about and think about some issues that are before us. So this is a discussion meeting, and we'll try to make the discussion orderly, but make it informative for everybody who takes part in it, which will be good because there's a lot of new housing things, there are a lot of things that are in front of us. So we'll begin as we usually begin with public comment. Is there any member of the public who would like to comment or explain himself? No? Okay. The minutes, Paul.
Madam Chair, I recommend approval of the minutes for February 11th, 2025, and February 25th, 2025. That's correct.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Good minutes, thank you very much. Now, planning board discussion, we're going to begin with, actually, a sad letter. Paul, the letter is from you, would you like me to read it or do you want to read it?
I don't have to read it.
Oh.
But you'd be wel-- you're welcome to read it if you'd like.
I think that we should read it. You've served on this board for a long time. We're all going to miss you. I'm very sorry that you are doing this, and I would like to read it into the record. You address your letter to Mr. Palmer, and it's a letter of resignation. And you are saying to him, please refer to your letter dated February 19th, 2025, advising that my term on the planning board ends this year. I have served on the board for more than 10 years and have enjoyed the working with the dedicated staff of the planning department and the planning board members during that time. However, it's time to provide the opportunity of others in the community to consider the opportunity to serve in Falmouth. I will be pleased to continue my responsibilities as clerk of the planning board until the end of my term. Therefore, I will not request nomination papers for reelection. This will allow sufficient time for others to obtain the necessary signatures to be qualified. And we are hoping that very qualified people hear this and learn of it. Unfortunately, the enterprise which listed vacancies on the select board and other places in town did not list our vacancies correctly, and we are hoping that people with a genuine interest in what the work of the planning board and with experience to back up their interest, apply and get elected to replace you. It would be hard to replace you. Your background as an engineer has been useful to the board and to the town. Thank you, Paul.
Thank you. Very kind of you.
Still here. Still here.
But we won't, after elections, you won't hear, so this is our time to clap. This is when we get to do it, Paul.
The whole audience applauds.
Actually, we should stand and go.
Okay, next on our agenda. No.
In the future?
Perhaps, but not this year. So next, the planning board's appointee to the short-term rental committee. The makeup of the short-term rental committee, which is formed by the select board, will be appointed by the select board, leaves a spot for a planning board member. All those who are interested in filling that slot, please raise your hand.
I would like to nominate Charlotte to continue her excellent work so that we don't have a gap from our input.
It looks like she nominated herself.
Well, she raised--
I'll follow you step forward.
This is official, and we can vote that we are--
Yes.
--nominating her then.
Well, thank you.
I'll second that nomination.
On favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. I'm glad to do this. I don't know why I've taken up such an interest in it, but I have. So I'll be glad to do that. Next, what we're going to do is go through the longest thing on our agenda. We have some things here that are going to take a lot of time and a few things that won't. So for people who might actually be listening, on our agenda, we have a series of things dealing with housing here in town. So this is our time to learn about all that the state has been doing. The state apparently is moving in the direction of usurping local autonomy as far as land use is concerned. They've taken up quite a strong hand in zoning. We had an ADU law, many places didn't. They extended the law, which we didn't object to, but we see, oh, this is a change. The state is now entering the zoning arena. And now they have what the governor's task force and with some other things that they're doing, they're really fully in it. I don't fully understand them. I've read them several times, they haven't really sunk in. This is our time to question them and pool our information on them and see what our feeling is about each one. So let's begin probably with the longest one, which is unlocking the Housing Production Commission's Building for Tomorrow report. These aren't things that already happened. These are things that could happen. Jed, did you prepare screens for us to see or how?
It's going to be challenging for you to see them up on the screen, but I'm happy to do so. I have flash drives, so I can load it up there. But what I do want to bring your attention to in your packet is this document here, the summary of the report itself.
Right, we're all got it.
So the report itself is over 150-something pages.
Right.
So Melinda has put together a summary for you, and, you know, based on what I'm reading, you know, you might want to start on page two of six because those are some of the land use and zoning suggestions, we'll call them, from that report. So for example, the first one is eliminating parking minimums. As you know, across the state, there are several communities who have done that, who have eliminated completely their parking minimums. I think there are other communities who are, you know, sort of hesitant to do that simply because it's a, it can be a scary thought. But the intent would be to essentially allow developers to not dictate, but suggest to the regulatory boards, this is our proposal, this is what we think we need for parking so that we're not creating oceans of parking that sometimes are used and sometimes are not. So again, it's a fairly aggressive approach by eliminating them altogether. I would suggest that if you want to take a look at the parking, which is part of what we're going to be doing in the future, is perhaps reducing rather than eliminating. But other items on this, I don't want to be talking the whole evening, but some of the things that you may want to pay attention to were expanding multifamily housing options. That's a big push by the state, as you know. And then this whole minimum lot size reform component, so essentially eliminating minimum lot sizes altogether. So again, just some items that I think you might want to focus on for tonight.
I think we should take them one at a time, and it would be good actually not to skip over the state's goal--
Absolutely.
--and the context and framing of this because the state has a plan that they haven't put into action to put some resources into this, so potentially municipalities will have a structure at the state to fall back on. And it doesn't look like a very strong structure to me, but at least it's something. So let's look at that first.
Madam Chair, may I ask a question? Who actually prepared the report? To indicate who wrote it, was it a consultant to the state or--
Right, so it's a conglomeration of a lot of folks. It's called Unlocking Housing Production Commission. So Governor Healey established the commission. It was staffed by, I think, a dozen or so votes.
At the state level?
Yes.
And it's been around for a while. The date, I read the date on the original report. It's like, it's almost a year old, isn't it? Or last summer or any--
I think that's perhaps when they started the commission, but they just released the report--
They just released the report, okay.
--a couple of weeks, I think. Yeah, so it's fairly new, hot off the presses, if you will.
So this is state action, but I think, you know, the state is a big place. This is not the legislature's action, this is the governor's task force. So this is way at the beginning of legislation.
Correct.
Right. So none of it actually has happened, it's just that it might happen. So people, not just us, but other boards in town and people in town, might want to know what they're thinking of teeing up and what they may want to lobby for and they may want to oppose.
Yeah.
So--
And it's also to gauge interest from towns, that maybe they might like to participate. They look for feedback, and they did the same thing with the budget and also the, what was the other initiative there for--
Are you thinking of the ADU thing?
But it's just up for discussion, like the, what was the other one? Seasonal communities?
Madam Chairman? I have a recommendation, since Doug's the only one here, why don't we ask him to join and sit at our table and then he could talk and not have to go to the microphone? Because it's really important to follow our procedure, and this way that works out.
Thank you, Jim.
He's an honorary member of the planning board.
Former honorary, right.
Former and honorary.
Welcome aboard.
Now we're following the rules.
I'm the liaison.
Then we won't get upset when you talk because we're supposed to stop you--
Sorry.
Okay, we're all going to talk when we're recognized by the chair. Pat?
What I looked at is going through this whole thing. If it's adopted, the towns, I mean the state both, but the towns, which is where it hits us in particular, and not just the planning office, will have to be looking to put on additional personnel. So that's a financial implication for the town, too.
Well, I think we have to adopt it, too, don't we? I mean, they make it available to us, but we have to decide if it works for us, and then we recommended the town meeting, like we did with the accessory apartment, you know, the, we used to have a special permit for the second, but we brought it to town meeting and we said, yes, we'll adopt that.
Yeah, this was not, this was just a component that I was picking up that would be something that the town would require if we adopted it.
That's an assumption, though. You know, we don't know whether we're going to have options or not. We really don't know what the final goal is--
Right, true.
--is going to be.
True. We don't know if it's going to happen. If you see stuff in it that you like, you might send a letter and say, you know, we're on board, we support this. Maybe you tell your local legislators to vote for it if you think--
At least talk to our reps.
Pardon me?
At least talk to our reps.
Yeah, if you all come to consensus that it's something you like, and you send it on, send feedback to your state representatives that, let's vote for this, or if you think it's intrusive and it's out of line, you send them that.
I'm looking at this as something we can cherry pick from.
Right.
You know, we should just go through it, say, you know, this looks good, maybe we should explore this some more, you know, put a check mark next to it, and I think we should approach it that way.
Well, that's probably what each of us did in preparation for tonight.
We should let the audience at home know what's under this document.
That's what we're about to do. So this begins with the context and framing. I think I'll just read the headlines of what the state says it's going to do at a state, what the governor's task force recommends the state do at a state level.
Yeah.
If they really want to unlock housing production and increase the amount of housing in Massachusetts, then the state thinks they ought to take immediate steps to support modular housing here because now we build houses one by one, you don't necessarily have to. There are many technologies for doing modular houses. They're saying the state should support that. There should be a state sales tax credit to provide for credit for construction materials purchased for the development of new multifamily housing projects or substantial redevelopments. There should be state-funded infrastructure to explore and expand existing funding mechanisms because one of the real barriers to actually doing any kind of building is the money. And so they would say they would come up with a state-funded infrastructure. And also workforce development initiatives aimed mostly at the construction trades so that we would have more people working in that industry and be able to do the building that they foresee happening if localities go ahead and do any of the things that they're going to try to encourage people to do. And we don't know whether there's going to be a mandate that localities do this or they're going to be cherry picking as we go along. So let's go through these. They begin with land use and zoning, and then they go on to regulations, codes, and permitting, and finally statewide planning and local coordination. So the ones that will really fall to this board most immediately, as Jed said, is land use and zoning. So let's first talk about eliminate parking minimums. This says the state should eliminate parking minimums. First of all, let's have an example of a parking minimum. That would be like, how many do you need in order to have a building at the plaza?
Right, so for example, when you are considering retail establishments, I believe it's one space per 200 square feet of leasable floor area.
So for a big box store, you wind up with needing how many parking spaces?
Depends on the size of the store, of the box, but--
2,000 feet, 10 spaces.
A good amount.
An easy way to look at it from that perspective.
And we have found the parking requirements to be really inflexible. That's one of the reasons why we fought to get them in Mr. Cod. We want a flexibility in the business zone to be able to reduce the parking so that we don't have so much empty asphalt and can do more building. And I assume that's aimed at this. So if you think about the big empty asphalt fields that we have here in Falmouth, Walmart all across there, Falmouth Plaza all across there, there are others. Where are the others? Oh, I know. When you're coming down Palmer Ave., and you come to the liquor store, the gas station, and they've simply paved a huge amount.
I just, Madam Chairman, I want to point out, in reading this, it's not only for the commercial, it also says that allow off-street parking for all housing. So that means when we're looking at somebody putting in a four-bedroom house on a 3,000-square-foot lot that now is going to be buildable if we allow the thing, that they won't even have to have parking, but to allow them to park in the street, that is what this is saying. I just want to point that nuance out in case, that's what caught my attention.
Okay, let's take it case by case.
I am, we're talking parking right now.
We are, but there are two cases here. One is the parking minimums that creates the big asphalt fields, and the other is keeping the cars off the street.
Okay.
What does the board think of that? Reactions?
Well, keeping the cars off the street, I mean, we have the fire requirements that you have to have at least 18 feet wide to clear, and I know in the summertime, when we have people renting houses and you've got eight vehicles, they're parking in the street. So you literally have maybe 10 to 12 feet to pass through, you know, with no sidewalks and vegetation on either side. So that, to me, is a major concern, and that's one of the things I suggested about the short-term rentals, is that parking has to be on the property because of that situation that occurs.
Right.
I agree with Bob, wholeheartedly.
So it would be in some places but not others? We have places that have wide enough streets that we could have parking on both sides and still--
Or you allow front yard parking. My neighborhood in Hatchville, everybody has a little slot in front, my driveway is in front of my house.
Oh, you mean like the curved ones?
Yeah.
Woods Hole, too. It's everywhere.
Yeah. What if I don't--
If I could. Also, there's, one thing to consider is that eliminating or reducing the parking requirements helps you when people want to redevelop these buildings on Main Street, the second floors that, and Jim has mentioned in the past, that there's a lot of space that could come into play, you know, if it was easier for them to redevelop it.
That's right, if they didn't have to provide parking for the apartments, that might do it.
Yeah.
Well, one thing that we have done, too, is look at shared parking. And so that could be part of that, instead of, that's part of the equation with eliminating minimum parking, if you can share parking. And that seems to have worked out where we've allowed that. Now, I know with Peking Palace, it's shared, but now that is being redeveloped over there, and the sharing was only for a certain number of years. So perhaps the sharing needs to go on.
Jim?
Well, one way to look at it is, I think if you read it, that they're going to eliminate minimums. But when we do our site plan review, we could say, it doesn't fit. It doesn't have to fit a formula for the minimum parking, we can just say, it doesn't fit. So they might be allowing us to make that decision based on our judgment on the site and the use and just eliminate the minimum that's just a rule that doesn't mean anything.
Case by case.
Okay, so that means we could evaluate it as long as we would still have the authority to say, no, it doesn't fit. And then, then we could say, well, you want to have four more apartments up there? It works, we need those places, yes, go ahead and do it. But I think to take away our ability to say it doesn't fit is a very dangerous thing to do because, you know, one, they can't make a judgment from Boston to see what, how we live. We're the ones that hear in our streets. And so it might be a good thing, if you look at it from that perspective, that they're actually giving us the freedom to make the decision by not having an absolute minimum and just say, yes, it fits or no, it doesn't. And that, we probably need some determination on that if that's what this law is saying. That'd be a positive way of looking at this law.
Well, and that is very, very positive. John?
This is eliminate parking minimums for housing only. I don't think this means for a shopping center or something else. This is for housing.
Well, but, but John, if you eliminate the parking minimums for commercial places, you're freeing up more land for housing.
I'm not saying we shouldn't do that, I'm just saying I think that this, this is right here, summary for unlocking housing production, not Walmart production or Kmart or some other company. This is, this is a residential program.
Oh, I don't read that into it. Does anyone else see it that way?
I do.
Housing above.
Mixed use is a big part of it.
Yeah, Mr. Cod.
Right.
Again, mixed use is housing.
Yeah, probably would have to--
I think this is housing.
Yeah.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
One other way to looking at it is, we now have no off-street parking. We could allow on-street parking, but limited to maybe one side of the road or something like that, which would ease this up quite a bit. Many streets, you can't park on the sidewalk.
Right.
Let me answer your question. You're saying, you know, we should wait, we could do this ourselves. We don't need the state to pass any kind of legislation for us to be able to do to eliminate parking minimums. We put them in, we can take them out. Isn't that true?
Correct. In fact, your parking bylaw is currently on the master list of bylaws that we are seeking to amend in the future because of the rigidity that's built into the parking bylaw, that you don't really have the flexibility to make a case-by-case assessment. It's just, you're doing this, this is what it says, you're stuck with it.
But if we're doing it case by case, how open are we to appeals and lawsuits and things like that where someone doesn't like the decision? So that's something you have to consider.
Yeah. Strategies like parking demand management come into play when you start talking about reducing your parking minimums because you have other sources of ways for people to get around. For example, if you have a fixed route transit system, then you don't necessarily need as many cars, but it really needs to be a robust system so that people can use it and get to where they need to be. But items like Uber and Lyft and, you know, all sorts of other ride-sharing programs exist all over the place. So it's entirely possible for folks to, if they work locally, to be able to not have a vehicle. But again, it doesn't work in every situation.
Yeah. But it could offer some, the flexibility--
Yes.
--to help create housing. An example is the gentleman that's going to put the apartments at Duncan, at Dunkin'.
Yeah.
I was going to say Dunkin' Donuts, but Dunkin'. What if he didn't have any parking available to him in a parking lot? We couldn't allow that to park on Sandwich Road, but there, I think the state is saying, try to figure out a way to have flexibility for different situations. They're not trying to take any authority away, they're trying to give us an opportunity to think about being more flexible. That's, that's how I read it.
Well, how many of you are interested in moving this up? We had it on our, our sort of long list of things that we wanted to work on without having put any kind of timeline around it, so it sort of just floats without any end in sight. Is there enough interest in this as a good way to improve the situation here in town around housing to move up and give ourselves greater flexibility on parking?
Why don't we go through some more of them?
I think we've got to get to the third bullet point first before we talk about doing the first because that could have a serious impact.
Oh, you mean the expanding?
Yeah, let's go through these and then we can--
I agree with that.
If you agree to number three, then we come back to number one, we've got a bigger, different issue.
Okay, good process. Let's look now at 40A reforms. Steps to take, which in turn would require aligning local zoning with master planning, implementing administrative review for certain by right plan review projects, so fewer applicants would have to come to us, they'd be going to the planning department, record appeals, strengthening the appeals process and de-incentivizing baseless appeals, reforming 40A. I'm not sure what all this means. Do you want to walk us through that?
Well, I think the appeal component, I think, speaks for itself, but the idea would be to allow housing to be built and not have all of the appeals that sort of, I don't want to use this phrase, but get in the way of housing production, right? Because certain appeals are legitimate, but there's also some appeals that are not. But you touched upon the administrative review of certain site plan review projects, so a good example of that is our plan currently for ADUs. If a homeowner is doing a simple ADU, let's not require them to come to the planning board, we can handle that with the building commissioner.
Yeah.
And so it makes that, that process a lot faster and cheaper, quite frankly.
As long as the planning department is following the guidelines that we would be judging it on.
Exactly, exactly.
Well, in that case, the planning department probably would report at each meeting the things that they have approved and the nature of them.
Right, right. And then the last item is, is, you know, aligning your zoning with your master planning work. And, you know, obviously here, it's a little different than other communities in the Commonwealth because you've got a local comprehensive plan that has to be, that has to align with the Cape Cod Commission's regional policy plan, so it's a little bit more complicated. But the idea is simple, is that your zoning is complementary to what your vision looks like for the next, you know, 10 to 15 years.
I think the recertification process that we're going through now is actually part of that.
Correct.
It is. So this is sort of an ongoing project, it's not a one-shot deal or something that you would just decide to implement. We're doing this on a continuing basis. I can't right now think of a place where our zoning rules are in conflict with our long-term plan.
Well, I think we'll get to that later in the agenda. When you look at the multifamily housing chart that I put together or the table, I think there could be some opportunity to potentially change your zoning or at least consider changing your zoning to allow more two-family or lower-density developments in other areas in town. But again, I say potentially and could. It's definitely a conversation, but that's the idea, that the state is looking to encourage communities to not just have single-family zoning, to allow a variety of different residential uses in all neighborhoods.
Well, in the totality of this, they actually oppose single-family zoning--
Right.
--throughout the whole thing.
Obviously, the Cape is, you know, unique because of water quality concerns, so balancing that is important.
Paul?
Yeah, I'm curious, what is meant by scale-up bonus payments?
I think you might be on the 40R section.
40R, that's what we're talking about here.
No, 40A.
No, no, we're way up at the top. We haven't got there yet. We're at 40A.
Oh, I thought you had moved down already.
No.
Okay, sorry.
Slowly, but I think we're going to move on now to expanding multifamily housing option. And the first bullet here, the state should allow two-family homes on all residential lots and four-family homes on all residential lots where there's an existing water and sewage infrastructure. So if you're on a street that has both water and sewage, which is an increasing number of homes in Falmouth, then you could have four-family homes.
Madam Chair, just a quick picture, just because it comes to mind, this is something I was involved in. Kendall Lane, lots of 4,000 feet, they're single-family homes. It's on the sewer and it has town water. They're saying they could all be four-family homes.
Where would they put them?
I'm just saying, that's, I just want to put that in perspective. If that's, when you, you want to see a practical application of what--
Yeah.
I want, you can visualize what that street looks like and how dense it is, it works, but it's packed in tight. They're just saying they could be twos, threes, or fours because it's on the sewer. Two if they're not on the sewer, and fours if they are, is the way I read this recommendation.
Round stones.
Ken?
Even two. On a 4,000-square-foot lot, like there are some 4,000 or 5,000-square-foot lot in East Falmouth, it'd be too dense.
Well, it's not saying lot size. I mean, Jim's using a radical example because that's a 40B development.
It says on all residential lots.
It says on all residential lots.
Actually, I, I, I'm not, John. I just put a house under agreement, it's only a 2,000-square-foot lot, and it's in, on the sewer and on the water in Maravista.
Wow. Wow.
Four units.
Well, it's one unit now, but that's what this, this is saying. So it's not limited to a 40B. We have many, many older lots before zoning that were built on very, very small lots. Maravista and Falmouth Heights in particular.
But could you fit four units? It would be tall.
It would depend on the parking.
Yeah.
35 feet?
It won't be required.
Yeah.
And, and lot coverage.
Yeah.
Lot coverage.
There's other criteria.
I mean, I can see two-family homes on acre lots or two-acre lots. I, I think that would be fine. And I've mentioned it before about expanding the accessory apartment bylaw to allow someone a greater percentage, either 100, even 100, up to 100% for another structure on the property. Let's start with 50. And the reason we didn't do 50 was people didn't want duplexes. And so, I mean, if you have an acre lot, you know, you could have two full-size houses on that lot and plenty of room for parking and all that. So, but I wouldn't want to see. What you don't want to see is big box for apartment units that are three stories tall and that type of thing in small neighborhoods. And this is happening in Cambridge now where you have a lot of single-residence homes that are big old houses. And they're saying that they can put up four to six stories.
Six stories.
On that same lot.
Yeah.
And we also, it comes down to, the Cape is different. We make money off the character of our town. And so that's a very fine line that you, you have to walk when you're dealing with, with the Cape. And if we turn this, I've been in Hyannis a lot lately. And it grosses me out every time I drive through Hyannis to see what's happened there. And yet their housing problem hasn't been solved. In fact, 40B has been in existence for 54, 56 years. And out of that, only about 11 or 12 towns have actually met the 10% over 54 years. So I want to see more done with property that is in existence, whether it's town-owned buildings that we no longer use, whether it's a business that's gone out. I think what they've done with the nursing home on Main Street, that, that's the type of stuff I would like to see more of and allow people to do more with the land that they already have as opposed to just going into the woods and tee ticket, clearing out, putting 900 units of housing on, on a piece of land. That's, that's not what I want to see. I want to see better, better use of the land we have that's already been built on and disturbed.
When I was going through this, I wrote a great big no on it because it begins with the state should. They make no provision in these two recommendations about two- and four-family homes and multifamily zoning districts for local decision-making. They're saying the state should, and I really hope that doesn't happen, that we wouldn't lose control of the character of our town. Because this, this, the thing that makes a neighborhood look good is homogeneity. If you think of European villages, the reason they're so charming and people will buy airplane tickets to go and experience the charm is because those buildings are homogeneous. They're built of the same materials at about the same time and they have been elaborately protected for centuries to continue to look like that. The thing that makes the neighborhoods here in Falmouth worth visiting, the ones that are worth visiting, and they aren't all worth visiting, is the ones where they all more or less go together. There's a homogeneity of the appearance to it. There's respect for natural materials. There's respect for the scale. There's respect for the amount of land around each. There's a look to each of the villages. The villages aren't all the same. And it's maintaining that localized character that really protects our town. And these two options that they're saying, absolutely, you'd lose the local option. There, there's no room here for municipalities to decide, our character's important to us. We'll make the local decisions. So we're just right, like this big black line right through that state should. That's like a real danger thing to me.
They forgot to put one word over that after that. State should recommend. That would change it.
That would change it. It would. It wouldn't make me like the recommendations any better.
No, it wouldn't. But it's not the state should.
No.
It's the state should recommend.
Yeah. Because now, I lived in Cambridge for quite a while. I like Cambridge. And, and to picture on this, I lived on Harvard Street and to, to picture that street now with, with some six-story things and mostly two-and-a-half-story things, it's going to look terrible. And I agree with you about Hyannis.
Yeah.
They've ruined that town.
Yeah.
I certainly agree and I appreciate your comments about just sticking these things in the middle of neighborhoods because that wouldn't make sense. All of a sudden, you know, four-unit skyscraper. But what about if there was some sort of an overlay district in an area in like maybe in the Mr. Cott area or downtown? Just, just a thought. Maybe there's a couple of.
Don't you think that's what we have? That Mr. Cott is that.
Oh, I don't know. Do we have the four units?
Oh, man.
It's already in there?
Well, you can go up to 20, 20 units per acre.
Right. It's not limited. Well, it's limited to 20.
Right, but it's not like, in the other parts of Mr. Cott, between Staples and CBS, you have single-family homes there. Maybe could convert. Maybe some of those are in areas that you might consider it. I don't know. Just saying.
But that is governed by Mr. Cott, that whole David Straits.
Right, but does it give you that four unit?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. So you could do that already.
It would be there.
Yeah.
Under the rules that we have now with that, with that zoning district, a developer who wants to take one of those, I like that side of the street that you're talking about. Wants to take one of those single-family homes that are now being used mostly, I think, as professional offices. There's one restaurant, but mostly professional offices. To take that piece of land, which goes back quite a ways, they could probably fit 20 units on that piece of land. But they'd have to come here to do that. They wouldn't be able to do it by right.
Right. I was thinking more in terms of some of the last couple of remaining single-family homes that if they're on a lot and they don't want to redevelop in 20 units, but just take their building and modify it into four, that's already there too, right? Okay.
They can do it. They're on a sewer. They're.
Manager.
Yeah.
Mr. Cott is by right.
Yeah, but you have to come here with a site plan review.
Just site plan review, but it is by right.
Right.
It's by right that they can do something that we approve aesthetically. They can't necessarily put off anything they want.
But the amount of units is by right, is what I'm talking about.
Oh, yes. It is.
So if they could make it look the way we want it to look, they could still put in the 20 units.
That's right. It's a negotiation. John?
So these are all talking points, but to me, one of the important things here is it says on the sewer. So this is not in West Falmouth, North Falmouth, East Falmouth. This is on, in our town, it's on the sewer. And that's what they're saying, on the sewer. And we've had many discussions where we said, why shouldn't we allow duplexes somewhere? It says duplexes. I can't just say, oh, fourplexes. This is duplexes. This is housing. If we don't create the housing that people can afford to live in, why do you think everybody goes to Hyannis? And they have the, the density. The other towns don't want the density. A lot of Hyannis has sewer. So that's why it's starting to look the way it looks. People are moving there.
But we have sewer.
And remember the report that 50% of the people that work on this, this island don't live here anymore. We're trying to solve, this is, we're just for discussion, but I can't, I don't think we can just say, we love our town, it's got to stay the way it is. Because guess what? We've got a four-story apartment building on Main Street. Who voted for it? Anybody? Nobody. If we don't do it, it's going to get done without our vote. If we don't do something, it's going to happen anyway. You cannot control everything. But what, what we, what we can do is plan for the future. I think that's what they're asking us to take a look at all of this and discuss what we're doing. But it can't, I don't think it's just all be written off as no. We don't want the state telling us what to do. So.
I actually agree with you. Pat?
A limitation and the state has, in a way, imposed is our sewage capacity. We're filled out as far as our capacity for the sewage.
We're not filled up forever.
Not forever, but.
And we're planning for the future.
And the state is going to have to come in and allow things that they don't currently allow.
Well, we're doing stuff now because a court case said we have to do it. That's what I'm trying to say. If we don't plan for it, it's going to be forced on us.
John, I'm not arguing with you. I'm saying, what we're saying is we've got to push back on the state saying, well, if you want us to do that, which we're not opposed to, then this has to happen on the state level.
And I agree.
And the other thing we do have is a sole source aquifer that we have to protect.
I, I don't disagree with any of that.
I know you don't.
But again, this, this starts with a preface that's on the sewer. And we already have, you know, you can take four borders into your house. What's in between four borders and a four-family establishment is a place where we want it to be, where it looks good and where people don't all have to have a vehicle?
But gradually, there are going to be sewers in many places in town. In fact, right now, an area of town is already sewed and it's right around the corner from where I live in North Falmouth. The New Silver Beach area is sewed. You know, are you saying we could put fourplexes up there?
I'm saying it's a consideration.
Yeah.
I'm saying we need to start.
Thinking about it.
We, we can't just be Dr. No anymore. We really, it's just my opinion. I'm a one-opinion person, but.
Okay, but my guess is no one on the board disagrees with that.
If you had two opinions yourself on that.
No one wants to be Dr. No.
I have a key point of myself.
I think there's another consideration here. Getting ready for this tonight, I went, and Judd and I were talking about it this morning, I went through the housing production plans of all the towns on the Cape, down through Yarmouth and Dennis, to see, you know, who's where. What are, what are they doing about this? Where, where do we stand with the other Cape towns? We're the only one at 10%. And our 10% is a little wobbly, but we're there. But the others, Yarmouth is the next closest, but the others, they're at 5% and 6%. And many of them, their housing production plans aren't even up to date. They say, oh, you know, we're updating, but they're not doing it. We are, we are, so far, on the upper Cape, we are the ones way out in front on housing production. We are making a greater effort and we have more on the ground and more to show for it than any other town on the Cape. Isn't that true?
It is.
It is. And I think it's a dangerous place to be because you pointed out Hyannis and how it looks. Actually, that village within Barnstable, they're the ones who are way out there on providing the most affordable housing. I'm assuming those things are more affordable. They may not be, but they are way out there. I don't think we want to be the capital of affordable housing on Cape Cod. I don't think that's where we want to position our town. We don't want to be behind anybody. I think we should be proud of what we've done, but I think we should be careful. We need to protect the town. For one thing, we're supposed to, one of the things the state says the planning boards are supposed to be doing is protecting property values. Think of that.
I just got a question going back to the sewage. So this multifamily housing option is based on sewage infrastructure. Where are we at right now? About 10% of the town that's sewed? And what are we expecting? What's the future of that over the next 20 years of homes?
We're, I think, less than 10% and we're hoping to be around 23 or 24%.
By when? Decade, maybe?
20 years, maybe?
20 years, okay.
Really?
All right.
That's pretty good.
Okay.
Had the chance in 1947 to have the whole town sewed. We turned it down.
Yeah, but the whole town then wouldn't be the whole town now, John.
So as you know, on the Cape Cod Commission, I get to see the other towns' plans. And we've been, we've been reviewing them as they come in. And so far, every community that has come in front of the board says they need, number one, to protect the character of their community. That's first on the agenda. And then housing goes like, and housing goes just like that. Every one of them so far.
That's the region we're within.
We need to protect the character of our, our community and our aquifers and our wetlands here over and over and over again. So it's not, not unique for us to have this kind of a, of a sense for our community. I'm just suggesting that if we don't do it the way we'd like to see it done, that's good for our, our community, someone else is going to do it for us anyway and we won't have a vote on it. And I'll just give you an example. I, I went to my insurance company yesterday. And the young lady that was helping me with, with my insurance, she said to me that she bought a house in 2021, she and her husband, in Seaco Shores, for like $350,000. And it's a little bit too small for them, but she says, thank goodness we bought the house when we did because we would never be able to live here if we hadn't.
Right.
And she's just, I don't want to say just a clerk, but she's not an owner. She's, she's working the, the clients as they come in the door. We need these kind of people. We, we can't, we need, I shouldn't say these kind of people. We need workers. Not everyone's making $100,000. Not everyone is retiring here. Not everyone has sold a house in New York or Maine or wherever and moving here with a lot of money in their pocket and paying cash for a house. We, we just have, that's, that's what this is all about, in my opinion. This is to create a housing scenario that's good for everyone, benefits everyone. So that's my thought. Number two.
Okay. Okay.
I have a question about that thought. What would that be then? Maybe duplexes everywhere?
Again, let's not use the word everywhere. Not everywhere and everybody. I think that's wrong to talk like that. This is saying on the sewer. So we, we've talked about.
John, it's not saying on the sewer. It's saying four families on the sewer, two families not on the sewer. That's what this says.
That's duplexes. Have we not discussed duplexes before? Have we not said many times we should have duplexes in, in certain areas and zoning? That's, that's what we do. We're planning and.
What's the difference between a duplex and a two-family?
Well, it's just semantics.
Yeah, semantics.
I, I mean, I read this as saying the sewer is for four, but that they're saying two families everywhere.
That's what I'm asking.
That's what I thought I read.
Right.
Two families everywhere and not even on the sewer.
Yes. That's what this says.
Okay.
To me, the greatest waste of buildable land is really in the one-acre zoning.
Yeah.
The place where, I grew up in Lexington, was developed, North Lexington, was developed in the 1930s when the streetcar line was coming out from the city and suddenly all of these, you know, Irish Americans and other bad people were turning up in these Yankee towns and the towns were not liking it one little bit. So they stuck us sort of out at the fringes of their town and put us on quarter-acre lots. So on an acre lot, you get four houses and you're in a neighborhood that's filled with kids. And a lot of the, the houses decided, I think I'll buy the lot next door. So people managed to get themselves bigger lots over time. The quarter-acre lot looks pretty big to a kid. You know, you can get lost in that quarter acre. Your mother's not sure where you are. And we have one-acre lots all over town.
Oh, yeah.
And your thought about putting some, another, now we can put ADUs thanks to the state. We can put an ADU anywhere by right and it can be what? Now 900 feet?
Yeah.
So we already have two houses on a one-acre lot. That's a half-acre lot. That's doubling the housing in town. And that's existing zoning.
Yeah. Well, that's what I keep getting at, is utilizing what we already have and enhancing it. The town I grew up in was, is a square mile, 25,000 people. Bunch of big old Victorians and American four squares. Some were built as two-family homes. Others were single-family that were converted. My, I did two of them for my brother. So that, that's what I'm seeing. Even if you had one structure on a one-acre parcel and you converted that into two families, either by allowing it to expand or just cutting, having one floor, a second apartment above the other. But, and with two separate addresses, you know, different numbers. But allowing something like that to happen where you can't unless it's 40%. And with a lot of big houses, I, I use the house I'm living in now as an example. 40% doesn't work. To divide the house up that way just doesn't work. It wouldn't make sense. But to divide it in half, make two stories, you know, it's a two-story house, have a second-floor apartment and a first-floor apartment, works perfect because that's what my brother's house was and that's what we did, you know? Front hall closed off the first floor, up to the second floor, a piece of cake. And, or being allowed to build a bigger ADU. You know, not everybody can fit in 900 square feet, you know, especially if we want young families. You know, allow a 1,200-square-foot ADU on a, on an acre parcel. You know, that, that's what I'm saying is we need to expand on that.
How fast do we need to create all these more options when we know we already have options on the books that are not being used? How fast do we need to create all these more options when we know we already have options on the books that are not being used?
Yeah.
John?
I, I think we should pay attention to this, but actually we've been approving ADUs at a pretty fast rate.
Yeah.
I think the last meeting we did six of them.
Yeah.
I think we should see what the next year does and absorb the bylaw change that they've already sent to us and, and, and see how it, what the impact of it is because we're not even sure yet. They're coming at us at a pretty fast rate.
But I don't think we're up to 100 yet. The last report we had was 55 and we added six.
But that was, they were coming through.
You get, yeah, you get approximately four a month. Some months are more than others. But they're, we have a lot of people kicking the tires.
Yeah.
Coming in, asking questions, et cetera.
It's helped, it's helped a lot of people. I mean, it's a really.
Oh, yeah. I think it's a good idea, but we should absorb it. I mean.
Well, you know, if we kind of have Canadian lumber, maybe we won't be building much at all.
Well, not this week, but maybe next week.
Okay, let's, let's move on. I just didn't like that state should part minimum lot size reform. Well, we were just talking about minimum. And once again, this begins with the state should eliminate minimum residential lot sizes statewide except in environmentally sensitive areas and on excluded lands, which in the, in the longer version is conservation land, uh, water protection land. There's a lot of excluded lands. What, what do you think of that? Or allow residential lot mergers, split lots, use of substandard lots by right for the purpose of creating multi-family housing.
See, I, I, I see two sides to that because I, I look at what is creating this, this influx of, of money that, and how it's affected the town. I just had this conversation with Bob Hamel today about how money is, is really affecting the housing market here. And you, you kind of need to discourage people from tearing down a house and going setback to setback. Right now, it's at what, 25, 10, 10 and 10? So if somebody wasn't allowed to do that, if we increase the setbacks for, for something like that, there's got to be some way of limiting, and I think they've done it in Provincetown where there's a certain percentage that you can expand by. So we need to do that because what's happening is someone's buying a, a house, say for, I'll use mine, my little one bedroom cottage in Hatchville. Somebody buys that for $500,000 on a, tears it down. They have made that price of that lot $500,000 for everybody else in the neighborhood. So it's artificially inflating the value of the land when, when that happens. And I, I really would like to see some way of discouraging that type. And granted, there are a lot of old houses. I'm working in a house now that really should be torn down. I mean, it's sitting on locust posts. It's that old. But, you know, so there, there's, there's a way I, I could see someone tearing it down and building at the same footprint. I, that's, that's okay. But to take something and build it out to every setback, which is what they've done on Long Island. I have a friend who's a, an architect from Long Island and he said, the first question is, what are the setbacks? Okay, build me the house to go to those setbacks. And so it's, it's inflating the value of property so that people, people can't afford to live here because of that. I mean, there's got to be some way.
What would it be?
Increasing setbacks, limiting how much you can add to a, the footprint of a house, limiting how much, if it's a tree lot, how much vegetation you can, you can clear. You know, just some restrictions on the size of the, the unit that goes into that property.
Didn't Martha's Vineyard try to do that in order to limit McMansions?
Yeah, and that, that's.
I wonder how that turned out.
I don't know. I mean, that, that's what I see happening is the, the mansionization of, of this town. And, and that's what's making it so unaffordable. You can go into any little neighborhood. And we, we went down to the tax assessor this year when we got our tax bill saying, how come our taxes went up so much? Well, somebody tore a, a house down, built a $2 million house, so all your property values went up. And other places don't do that, you know? But in Falmouth, it seems if property value goes up in, on one lot, it gets rippled out to everybody else. I mean, that was the explanation.
I have a comment, but I think John was reading.
John?
So, um, uh, in our, in our building code, and Doug, you might be able to help me because I don't do any remodeling, but isn't there a, a portion of the code that says if you want to remodel a house, you can only do a certain percentage per year of the value of the house?
On a non-conforming stru- structure.
On a non-conforming?
On a non-conforming structure, that law. It, it, it's the assessed value. You can only do 50% of the assessed value per year on a non-conforming.
What's non-conforming for, for an existing house?
Too small a lot, you know, something that doesn't fit zoning. It doesn't match.
But the house was already there.
But, but it's still a non-conforming, it's a structure. Many, every structure in Falmouth Heights is non-conforming because it's acre zoning on a 4,000 square foot lot. So, I mean, that's what non-conforming is. The lot's too small. That makes it, instead of just going to get a building permit, you got to go to the ZBA, have a neighborhood hearing. Everyone gets to talk about.
So it's non-conforming what the new lot size would be in that area? Because it went to one acre zoning, is that what you're saying?
Well, I think Falmouth Heights, believe it or not, is one acre zoning.
So you're pre-existing non-conforming.
Yeah, pre-existing non-conforming.
For me, it comes into play more in the coastal zone. And in a coastal zone, say I've got a house that needs a new roof, windows siding, and then, you know, mechanicals and so forth. So years past, I used to say, let's do the roof first, close out the permit, then we'll change the windows, close out the permit. Now the price of the value of the house is increasing, so I'm getting ahead of the game. When it's time to replace the HVAC, now my house value is up by the roof, the windows, the siding. Now I work on the inside. So that's how we used to do it. Now you have to take all those expenses over cumulative over three years. And if you go 50%, if you go over 50% of the assessed value of the structure, you have to bring the whole thing up to code, including hurricane tie downs, uplift, everything.
So I think what I'm trying, the point I'm trying to make here is maybe that type of a bylaw that we already have is making people that buy these homes tear them down because they're spending a lot of money anyway, piece by piece. Maybe in their mind, it's easier just to tear it down and build what we really want.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Because you can build what it really want.
Yeah, yeah.
Maybe that's why we're seeing so many tear downs because.
Do we really want to encourage that? That's just what we were just saying, we don't want.
But, well, no, no.
I, I think people are tearing them down because of the, of our bylaw that, that stretches out how much you can.
It's true, and they want it now. They don't want to wait three years. They don't want to play around.
Who wouldn't want it now? I mean, I, I built, I built a house on Marat Road. I see two, two tear downs and rebuilds right on Bridge Street, right, right?
No, the, the problem that I see is they're tearing down a house and then building something much larger. I mean, go along Green Pond.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, you wouldn't believe the size of the houses on Green Pond.
Oh, I would.
And those were all little capes.
But what I'm trying to say is maybe if we, they didn't have to do a piecemeal, they could remodel the whole house.
Right.
Without, without any.
Yeah.
Penalty, they would do that instead of tear it down and build a bigger house.
Yeah.
Possibly, I don't know, but.
Possibly, but more likely they're going to go bigger because they've gone through the expense of tearing it down.
Right.
They're going to max it up.
Yeah, but if, if they don't, if they can remodel it as much as they want at one time, instead of doing it over a two or three year period, they may just keep the house and update it.
Yeah.
Instead of tear it down and build a bigger house.
Yeah.
Just a, just a thought. I don't know. I don't have that much experience at it.
Changing those rules though really wouldn't add more housing.
Nope.
Well, it's, it's trying to keep the inflation of the prop, the, the lot itself. And that, that's, that's what I see is when you buy a piece of property for a certain amount of money and then tear something down, so it's an empty lot at that point. Uh, you're, you're paying that much for the lot.
Mm-hmm.
And that's just how I'm seeing it. And it's, it's an inflationary thing that's happening with.
Is that how the assessor sees it?
I don't know.
If I could, before we get off the minimum lot size, I, my understanding, or what I kind of thought this meant was we have a lot of two acre zoning. Are they asking us to consider one acre zoning? And if we did that, if we put that out there, how many people that have a house that don't really need two acres, but they ended up on two acres might subdivide and sell and then there's another house there? Just a thought. I don't know if that's something we want. Probably have to send that one to the voters because it's really a huge change.
Right.
But that's what I'm, that's what first came to mind when I saw that, you know, consider changing your minimum lot sizes.
I have a question on that.
I think it'd be a really tough town meeting.
Yeah, but.
Maybe.
But Doug, you grew up here. Why did two acre zoning come into being? Instead of just all one acre?
Because it was the idea of we want luxury living. We want nice, big lots and we want it to be a real fine, you know, really nice place. And, you know, we've encouraged that. We've encouraged people to have, you know, great homesteads that are on two acres with big houses and.
There wasn't anything underlying.
I, I wasn't here for it to, to say. I don't know why it was done, but that's what I understand. It's, it's what we've created.
My memory says that in the eighties, there was so much new development happening. The buzzword was always, we're going to overrun the school system. That was, every planning board, we're going to have, the school system's going to drown. We're not going to be able to afford it. Our taxes are going to go up and up and up. So if you go, we went, we went from like at, at Maravista, what, 7,500 or some of them 5,000.
55, yeah.
To 10,000, to 15, to 20, to 40. It, it was a progression.
The amount of the schools.
The amount of children in the school system. Right into the nineties, there, we're going to, and all of a sudden, MHP built a high school, had to student with the MHP.
Yeah.
And now we don't have an overrun school system anymore. And we have bigger lots.
For those of you remember when we did, it was Cypress Street and they were, we were talking about improving some of the drainage and whatnot. One side of the street, the houses are, the lots are 4,000, 4, 5,000 square foot lots. They're real small. The other side of the street wasn't developed, was all one family. It's now acre zoning. It's the strangest, and when you look at the, any maps of Maravista, you see this big green square on, on, on the GPS and all these little lots all around it. But that's, that's what zoning did. They were building out Maravista. The lots in Maravista, the original subdivision, I think they were down to 1,000 square foot lots. The 1948 plan that came out, the little teeny lots, I mean, when you go look at the plan of record, you need a magnifying glass to look at your lot lines.
They put those little tiny Hudson houses on them, military.
That was getting built and that's the way Falmouth Heights and Maravista was built, I think in the teens. And they were in the twenties and thirties. Yeah, they were thinking, well, camp sites almost.
That'd be like New Silver Beach.
Yeah, well, that's, and then I think they were afraid, I, I remember the housing building in the seventies. It was, I remember going around and seeing new houses roaring, great harbors, everything was just exploding. But it was, we had some very small lots in the beginning here in this town.
Yeah. Seaco Shores is like that too.
They're big compared to the Maravista lots.
Well, at some point, like in the nineties, water quality became important.
Yes.
So it's a trend, it's a, it just goes, it goes, it changes as it go along. That's why we're here trying to plan for the future.
Right, well, there are unintended consequences.
Well, but we have a lot of experience now too, so.
True. We went from being shacky to being fancy.
Yeah.
And now we're too fancy and we're thinking about going back a little bit.
Yeah, now we're McMansion. Now we want to go back to tents.
Yeah.
Well, we haven't established that's what we want to do. We're just discussing it.
Right.
There's the Stan Pat group too. 40R reforms. The state should amend, but tell us about 40R, John. What, what is 40R?
So you're familiar with 40R because your Mr. Con district is essentially a 40R district. It's, the missing pieces are the state oversight, the state regulations, and then the state bonus payments or the monetary funding that you get by establishing the district. It's essentially creating multi-family housing in eligible locations or high quality locations around transit stations, around bus stops, in your downtowns and.
40R requires a transit component, doesn't it?
It doesn't require it. It has it as one of the components that is most valuable. But you can still do a 40R district in a downtown that doesn't have transit. It's not as appealing, certainly, but you can do it. Folks have done 40R districts near highways, so there's access options. Yeah. But the, the basic premise is it's to allow multi-family housing by choosing where it goes rather than being told by 40B. So 40B is the reactive, 40R is the proactive.
What does this mean? Scale affordability requirements to density?
I think the idea is to create more affordable units when you allow higher densities. So the more housing options you've got in there and you allow higher densities, increase the amount of affordability. So it's very similar to 40B. It requires 25% of your affordable units. So I think the intent is to, hey, look, if you've decided that this is where you want to be and you're allowing a certain density, then you need to up the amount of affordable units.
Wouldn't that come into play on the local initiative projects also?
Uh, how do you mean?
Well, there, they, the local initiative projects, which is what we're sort of getting now that we're at our 10%,
Yep.
they have to do the 25%, right?
Correct.
Right?
Yes.
And the town is sort of encouraging them to go higher on that.
Yes.
With what luck?
Mixed. There are some developments that are very enthused by that. And there's some developers, it's a challenge for nonprofits. It's a little bit easier, we'll call it, in air quotes. For profit developers, it's a different story. So we're, we are constantly negotiating with developers to create more affordable within those applications. So it's a mixed bag of success.
Is there any limit on where those lips can go?
No. No. So again, it's a, it's an applicant who would, in normal circumstances, file a comprehensive permit, a 40B application with the zoning board of appeals. The lip process is essentially just allowing the select board, if they choose that, or if they determine that it's a consistent with, you know, our local needs, to essentially endorse the project before it gets to the, to the ZBA. So there's a conversation about the components, the density, the affordable units, the amenities that they're providing so that when they get to the ZBA, they've already gone through sort of that preliminary discussion phase and we're getting more than what they would normally be required to provide. But again, that's not always the case, so it sometimes is a challenge to get through that process.
Do they have to also specify which, which local zoning rules they need waivers from?
Yes, yes.
So it's the same rules for 40B?
So think of it, yes, it's exactly the same as 40B. Think of it as a friendly 40B. You've heard that term. That's the process, that's the lip process. So that it's a, it's a friendly discussion about you give, we give, et cetera. And so that, you know, both parties sort of win at the end. Where traditional 40B, there doesn't have to be that friendliness, you know, component. It could just be an applicant applying.
Bourne right now is working on the 40R. I think they're somewhere midway in their design phase, if I remember reading correctly. And I personally would love to have more information as a board because it is a very local 40R. It's just in the doing stage so that we can be schooled more on this. The reason Bourne has it is because of course they're the terminus of transportation.
Right.
And there's been a lot of pro and con. And from what I read recently, I think they have a variety of housing within this. Including, I, I hate to be quoted on this, but I probably will be and I'm probably speaking erroneously. I think they are doing something like 40% affordability. Oh, it is right then.
I, I don't know.
Oh, okay.
I wouldn't be surprised.
But it's a much larger affordability.
I'm just saying it sounds good. I, I don't know that it's true.
Liar, liar.
No, I'm serious. I'm just nodding because I'm like, yeah, 40% sounds good.
But I would love to have more information on what's being done there for the planning because this is something we could start looking at as a town.
You've got, so your Mr. Con district is your 40R district. So you have options to, if you really wanted to, you could bring that back to town meeting and say you want to do a higher percentage of affordable units as a requirement. It's certainly a conversation that you could have. You could also increase the density. You know, you've got the ability to talk about that and if you want to make changes, you've got the ability to. You know, you've got the ability to talk about that and if you want to make changes, you've got the ability to do that.
It's like increasing the density would be a more likely way to go because that's proved to be more of a barrier for the ones that we've heard about trying to do Mr. Cod, that the density just isn't great enough for what they think they deserve for profit.
And doesn't forty R get some state funding, too?
It does, so.
That's my thought. And we are, you could say we are a terminus because everybody goes through us pretty much to go to the vineyard.
Yeah, so when you, when you establish the district, you get an incentive payment. And then I believe every time you've got an applicant, the number of units that you provide, I believe there's also bonus payments on top of that, that the, that the community receives from the state.
That's what I was reading here. And then if you fail to perform, you have to repay all of that.
Correct, yeah.
So it seems to me like this would be a really good thing for us to pursue, to get additional housing in.
To claim that we're a terminus?
No, that's part of what this whole thing is, so that you can get more density and, I don't know, I'm learning.
When we were working on a Mr. Cod, we looked at the forty R and part of the concern was that what the state says they're gonna do with the payment to the town and what they do might be a little bit different.
That I don't recall, John. It sounds about right.
Either non-payment or slow payment or it was quite a bit of discussion about that. But I, I wanna mention in a town of Barnstable, the, the commission and the town of Barnstable voted to have two hundred and fifty apartments built in their industrial park. And that was, I think, a year, year and a half ago. And two hundred and twenty of them are occupied. And now, right next to it, they, the commission just voted three hundred more apartments. It's an out-of-state developer. But the town of Barnstable wants ten percent affordable at the eighty percent and two percent at, I think it was sixty or sixty-five percent. That's, that's their prerog- prerog- plus it's on the sewer and all of that.
Why does they want more to be affordable?
They call, they're workforce housing. People, they want people living there and working in their community.
Yeah.
Not just the affordable units, but the market units, too.
So they're saying, they're probably thinking that just the sheer volume is gonna make the affordability.
And, and the, the building that's already built is beautiful. I mean, they have, you know, playgrounds and et cetera, et cetera. It's very attractive. It's brand new, but it's very attractive.
I think our tech park is way underutilized.
Yeah, so. But again, they're on the sewer.
Doesn't allow housing.
Yeah, I know.
So, just to, just to give you some information what's going on in another community.
Yeah, in other places. You know, the ones that, the land that interests me in Bourne is the federal government or wherever controls it, allowing housing up on Otis. That would be ideal.
Right.
Well, they're doing a new master plan right now to divest themselves of some more land, so it could be coming.
How can they be sure that, the, the good part about Otis, aside from all the airplane fuel and so forth, is at least it prevented a lot, a lot of sewage going into the aquifer. But now, if it's going to be for housing, is it going to be at the periphery of Otis or where will they put it?
They're just starting to really think about it. So they're, they're looking for public comment and. There's a council that's just starting to really start to think about it all. They're thinking about putting a composting facility out there. They're targeting seven acres and it's not exactly determined where. But there's a lot of uses that they're open to out there and housing. There's some discussion of whether it should be for more military housing and then perhaps another section should be for civilian housing. So they're just starting to talk about it. But they're very open to suggestions.
You say they. Who are they?
Military commanders. General Pho was just mentioning at the last meeting of the community civilian advisory group, they had a presentation a week before last about Carrie Parcell talking about the composting. And then the generals also mentioning that, reminding everyone that the, the master plan for the base is just getting started. So if people have, you know, ideas and wanna talk about it, you know, now's the time.
Because there's a real opportunity for there to be a lot of affordable and workforce housing right there.
There could be, definitely, yeah.
Oh, you're talking about, you're talking about a partnership, too, with, with the federal government. And, and I think we need to look at more partnerships. I, I look at the institutes down here who have properties and expanses of land. I, I go back to the MBL property off of Oyster Pond Road. All these little tiny cottages that I lived in year-round. And those could be redeveloped with a partnership with the town or an affordable housing entity and just not tell the institute you need to do this on their land.
They're actually already considering that?
Yeah, yeah. And I, that's something I keep bringing up and it's, we've gotta look at more partnerships. You just can't put it all on a developer. And that's why, you know, we need to incentivize developers, whether it's through land grants or financial assistance, tax incentives, things like that, so.
Well, if we go out to Otis, we have to be extremely careful about what might be disposed of there because all you have to do is remember the cleanup. Still ongoing in some areas. And Falmouth was one of the towns that put pressure on the government or we wouldn't be as far ahead as we are right now in the cleanup of the spills out there. I, I've heard innumerable stories about how they'd get an extra shipment of fuel and what would they do? Oh, you can't return it to the government, dump it. The testing that they used to do, dump it.
Yeah, friend Buzzmottin used to talk about that. They'd pull it up in front of a tank, a pit.
A lagoon.
Open up the tank and.
Absolutely.
It ripped, yeah.
But so whatever goes in up there is going to have to be contained so that nothing is disposed of that will wipe out our water supply.
Right. That's the top of the lens.
Shall we move on?
Yeah.
Oh, we've got one more section under land use and zoning in this things that the, the task force came up with. And again, it begins with the state should, but we could and we can object to it if we want to. And now we're out from under forty B, at least for a little bit. Streamline the appeals process, require applicants to post a mandatory bond. Increase frequency of housing stock counts and updates. That's sort of an efficiency thing. I think that our housing coordinator really keeps up with that very well. But here's one that's really worth talking about. Remove subsidy requirements. Now, you can't get on the SHI and count to the ten percent unless you have a subsidy and the subsidies are very limited. So this really is a, a big barrier to building up your ten percent. What do we think of that?
Yeah, if it would help us, well, I, I always thought it was a little odd that rentals count towards our affordability and when, when they're really not affordable.
Right.
So I think anything to, my, my complaint, remember we tried to eliminate forty B? There, there was a ballot question they wanted to eliminate and I was never in favor of eliminating it. I wanted to tweak it a bit. And one of the biggest complaints we have down here is when we have a forty B development, we don't have any say in how it looks and how the size and things like that. You know, whether they comply to every regulation and all that. I think we should have a little bit more latitude and forty B should allow us a little more latitude. And given that we're a vacation resort as well. So those are the types of things I would like to, to see happen with forty B.
Any other general comment on forty B or the SHI?
I, I do agree with Bob that we need to have a little bit more say instead of having it stuffed down our throats.
I'll never forget that guy coming when we said, yeah, we'd like to see a little bit. No, we're not gonna do that. Everything, that was his answer to everything. And he was just really nasty about it. And I, I think, you know, these are people coming from out of town and they don't care what, what happens here. And I, I take great offense to that because, you know, how the town looks and feels, there's an atmosphere to it. It all equates to quality of life. And, you know, if you just build, baby, build till this becomes so crowded and so unpleasant and polluted and everything else, you know, then you destroy the reason for being here.
But we, we do have safe harbor now from forty B.
Right.
So we can dictate now how it'll be done and where it'll be done.
Yeah.
But we still gotta make eighty units a year.
Right.
Now and maybe next year eighty, eighty-one or eighty-two.
I like what the CPC is allowed to do now by funding other affordable housing entities to buy existing housing, houses and rehab them and turn them over. I think we need to do a lot more of that. I mean, I've joked about my organization calling ourselves Rehabitat when it gets to the point where we can't find land to build on that's affordable for us to be able to build on. And, and again, it's utilizing what's already here. I just wanna see more of it. And I, I think that it's, it's a bunch of smaller steps. You need to do everything. You just can't pick one package and say, this is what we're gonna do to solve it. You need to have multi-housing districts. You need to allow more density on one acre lots. You need to have affordable housing entities, be allowed to buy existing property. And you need tax incentives for, for doing these things. So to me, it's a multi-pronged approach and I think we need to be open to it.
Jim?
I, I have a question. Cause we had, we saw some major changes regarding housing from the state mandated down a few years ago about town meeting votes and percentages and two-thirds vote. What if they, the state just decides to take, take the word should and say shall and all this thing?
That's when, that's when you have a.
That's one little word change.
Yeah.
That's when you have a mutiny.
Yeah.
Well, they, they jammed a lot of stuff on us the last time. There was a mandate from the state of, of how we vote for housing issues that no more two-thirds vote on town meeting for zoning changes. Nope, if it's housing, it's fifty-fifty. And that was a shall.
True, actually.
Every community in Massachusetts has this now.
Yeah.
Right.
Not just us.
That's one little word change.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it's one little word change that takes a lot of politicians to do it. All of them have to go home.
Yeah.
So would they dare? Well, we're watching when people dare, what they can actually do. But I can't see the current legislature in Massachusetts making that little one-word change on some of these things.
Yeah.
I think it's alarming that they would actually send something out saying the state should and make it a state thing that would happen rather than a local thing. But the useful, useful thing, I think, for our board to do is to look through those land use things that are in that document and see which ones we actually like and could move forward on, no matter what the state does. Those might be things that we, we would wanna do. I won't ask that now, but I think that we ought to take a look down through the list. Everything under land use and zoning we've just gone through and see which ones do you think you could get behind to try and move that along now. We don't, we don't have to wait for some other entity. We haven't lost our local autonomy yet.
Can I ask a question? What does it mean to streamline the appeals process, to shorten it?
I think it make it more understandable and shorten it, yeah, make it more efficient. Our understanding is that some appeals can take a very long time. And as you know, when a community is under its ten percent, the appeal goes to the Housing Appeals Committee. Generally speaking, they side with the developer because the point of forty B is to create affordable housing. And so, you know, when there's an appeal, there's generally siding on the side of the person who's proposing the affordable housing. But once you're past your ten percent, it's a different story. So, yeah, I mean, we've heard stories of appeals taking forever. I mean, the, the appeal with Liberty Green seemed to take quite a bit, quite a bit of time. And as you know, it doesn't have to be a director buter, it can be anyone, so.
So get Elon on it right away.
So are they suggesting that towns should voluntary streamline? I mean, is it up to us or is that a state mandated?
It would be a state. It would be a state thing. Cause that's state law.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, those, those are the ones that really apply to us. If you look further in that same document, they're really things that go to conservation, they go to the wastewater. They're not things that are going to come to us. So that, I'd rather that we spend our time tonight. That clock hasn't been changed.
I was wondering if anyone would notice.
Yes.
Only a half hour in.
Yeah. For those who's actually keeping accurate time, I'd like to get through the rest of the housing things at least. And the next one up is seasonal housing requirements. And there are pieces in this and I think this is actually a law already.
What's that now? Seasonal communities?
Yes.
Yeah, so it was passed as part of the Affordable Homes Act. It was language that was inserted into that very long document. And essentially, the seasonal community handout in your packet, hopefully everybody got that. It describes what a seasonal community is. As you can imagine, it's, it's a community that, you know, sees its population, employment, et cetera, change in the, in the, due to the seasons. One of the things that is important to point out with seasonal communities is that a certain number of communities automatically made or were considered designated as seasonal communities. Falmouth was not one of those, was.
We didn't make the thirty-five percent?
Yeah, we did not make it as a automatic designation. So the town would have to apply for that. It seems a bit still unclear exactly how that process will work and what sort of incentives are included in being designated. But the reason we bring it forward tonight is because one of the requirements, if you are to designate yourself as a seasonal community, is to create a zoning ordinance or a zoning bylaw that would permit the use of tiny homes. So tiny homes are considered structures, detached structures that are four hundred square feet or less. And so the real question here is, you know, is that something that the board would be open to? The whole idea of tiny homes. As you already know, you've got your accessory dwelling unit bylaw which would allow up to nine hundred square feet. It doesn't, it doesn't say that you have to develop a nine hundred square foot accessory dwelling unit. But this would be another avenue to create smaller homes. And in fact, the next agenda item talks a little bit about that as well. The getting back to creating smaller structures. And to Bob's point, the larger you build, the more you have to sell it for. The smaller you have, obviously, the more affordable it creates.
I had a question with tiny homes. If you don't change the lot size, what's good to have a four hundred square foot house from a forty thousand square foot lot?
Right.
That's what I, I was gonna talk about.
So, I mean, what tiny homes doesn't mean anything unless you first change the lot size.
No, you create little communities with the tiny homes.
With one thousand square foot lots and a four hundred square foot house or something like that?
Well, what, whatever, it's.
A cluster, you're saying? Okay, it's a cluster development.
Like a little cluster where the units are only four hundred square feet.
Because you can build it right now. If you wanna build a four hundred square foot house, you're allowed to build it.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, you can. I think the idea with these is, if I could, is what I've seen, actually, there was some people that were trying to build them in Falmouth and they thought they were gonna get legislation changed, but it didn't work out.
Yeah.
But they're mobile, they're on wheels.
Yeah.
And they park them on a lot that's already there.
Yeah.
And they were trying to sneak them in here and there, but they're a little bigger than some, you could just sneak in.
Registered vehicles. If you do it that way, it's, it's a registered vehicle. That's what this says. It is movable. It's a trailer.
So that's just one way it could be done. You could do a village, you could do, or you can say, you know, sneak them in if you got a two-acre lot and you don't mind having it on there. And you, maybe as long as it can't be visible from the street or something, I don't know.
Do they tie those tiny homes into the existing septic? How does that work?
Yeah, they would likely do that. And again, you know, considering.
Or a separate tank for the waste.
It, it could be a number of different things.
Okay.
Especially considering where you are, right? There's certain areas in town, obviously, that are more sensitive than others. But, you know, the tiny home conversation is a little challenging considering where we're at with the future of the sewer and septic situation.
And is it similar with the ADU that you have to subtract a bedroom from the existing home if you're gonna put a tiny home?
It, well, it wouldn't nec-. Yeah, wouldn't necessarily. The reason that comes into play is because that language is, is written into your accessory dwelling unit bylaw.
Okay.
And so that requirement is only in the ADU bylaw itself. And I will, you know, say that part of the changes that we made to the ADU bylaw was, well, part of the changes, I should say. One of the things we left in was the requirement to keep the number of bedrooms depending on where you're located. Coastal Pond Overlay and Water Resource Protection District. It'll be interesting to see whether or not the Attorney General agrees with, with that language. We just recently. We just recently received an extension, so we're not quite sure the reason for that, but we have not been approved on that zoning bylaw amendment as of yet. So, it will be interesting to see whether or not environmental factors are allowed to regulate the number of bedrooms that you can have when you're talking about an ADU. Because don't forget, ADUs are now a protected use, just like solar and childcare. You're not supposed to regulate them through a special permit. You're really, they're allowed by right. And the state has made that abundantly clear, that they are not to be regulated essentially, other than the size and the parking. So...
Thank you.
It's an interesting conversation.
Yeah, and where do tiny homes separate from mobile homes?
That was my question.
Trailer parks.
Yeah.
Right.
What's the difference?
Because the size of the structure could be comparable.
And when you look at it, trailer parks are the most efficient form of housing that you could possibly have. And yet, not all towns is zoned for it. I know Sandwich has one, and of course, Wareham has them.
Mashpee has one. Mashpee, Moore.
Mashpee, yeah. So, you know, we've just never had that as part of our, any bylaw or zoning code that we've had in town.
We have a trailer park.
Pretty close.
It's on at the intersection of John Parker and Thomas Landers. It's a trailer park.
Really?
Right. Sunset something or other. I've forgotten what his name is.
Turner.
Go down Thomas Landers, going towards Sandwich Road, on the right, just about where John Parker comes in.
It's a campground.
Oh, it's a campground, though. It's not, that's not permanent house.
It's a trailer park.
But not for permanent, it's not a permanent trailer park.
No, people come and go.
Right, yeah. It's a campground, just like Zipper Wissit. But, so, I think, we talk about workforce housing. If we were talking about putting housing on the base, I would think that would be ideal for, out on the basis. You have trailer parks out there that, workforce housing. I always looked at the Sandwich Road Gate as a good location from that, because you could have transportation starting up there, bringing people down into town. And I always get on, whenever we talk about affordable housing, I always bring up transportation. We really need to work on transportation on the Cape. People just don't have an efficient way of really getting around in order to live someplace and not need a vehicle. I mean, I grew up in a town where we had public transportation, and you didn't need to drive everywhere. So, that's something that we really need to bring into the mix.
I did ask, Tom Caher came to our select board meeting a few months ago, and I did ask him to, if he's, you know, take into consideration that we have a lot of affordable housing on Gifford Street now. Now, we have the YMCA coming. There's other housing right up the road. So, we really are at the point where we need a service going down Sandwich Road, Brick Kiln, and Gifford. And he said he would take it into consideration, so...
Good.
Maybe we need to follow up with that and ask, you know, send another letter.
We were talking about that when we were looking at locating a senior center up there. If the senior center went up there, they would have run buses up there. Yeah. It takes a certain amount of mass for them to want to do anything with...
I would hate to see a trailer park come to be our answer to affordable housing. Maybe this is just a prejudice of mine. It feels like it, but it's a strong one.
Yeah. I mean, it all depends on how they're done. I mean, there are trailer parks, and then there are trailer parks.
I think the principle is what you're getting at.
Yeah, yeah.
It's smaller structures, you know, placed close together in a sort of village environment. And it can be fifty-five plus. It can be a mix of age allowances, but the general principle is that it's owned by one entity. And those folks who are essentially renters, I mean, they buy the structure, but they don't have land ownership.
No, they're tremendously common all through the Midwest and the West. Lots and lots of trailer parks. And for the most part, they used to be big ranches and farms. And then the farmers discovered, you know, I can buy a bunch of these tin can houses, cover my land with it and make a pile of money, and they don't maintain them. And they're just big outdoor slums. And you can look at it and say, wow, I mean, that's, I wouldn't want to have to be there. It's just too easy for it to deteriorate.
It's hard to go backwards in terms of size, right? So, we're getting used to things that are larger, right? And our structures are larger. And now, you're sort of, you know, not forcing, but creating an environment.
In your own mind, you know, if we're going to go from the present, close to seven billion human beings, to somewhere around eleven or twelve billion human beings, things are going to get smaller. We're not all going to have eight rooms to rattle around in. So, you just know that's coming anyhow. But that doesn't mean you have to abandon the idea that you should have a quality of life within those smaller spaces. It really doesn't. And it doesn't mean that you should enable de-lowering of a quality of life, even though it's less space. I just, and I know you're laughing at me, and I know exactly why.
No, I think it would depend on, it's like any other developer that builds something, they're responsible for maintaining it and how it looks and all that. I would see the same thing as a trailer park. And again, I'm not talking about having one on Main Street. I'm looking at it. That's something...
So, you think it's something that should be hidden. If it's hidden, it's okay.
Well, yeah, I've been told that if it's in Hatchville, it's hidden, so why not, you know?
I think if you've got something you want to hide, you ought to think about fixing that.
Oh, nobody can have fun with this meeting.
That's what I was told by a ZBA member.
Was it maybe two weeks ago, I went in and I talked with Jed about tiny houses? Because on my cell phone, I kept getting these ads coming through, Amazon sells a tiny house that the picture looks pretty attractive.
Two-day delivery.
About twenty thousand dollars. Now, the quality of it or the insulating capacity of it, I have no clue. But I also think about the four hundred square feet is too small, really. Remember the people who came in here with the ADUs? I think we had three of them with that particular builder. And they looked really good, and these people wanted to continue working with people who were doing ADUs here. So, what I had approached Jed on is that the town has, because of tax payment default, I think, taken lots. I do not know how many or what size or anything like this. If the town had several lots on the sewer, town water, you could do a little community like this right on that lot. But it might be plunk right in the middle of some pretty big houses. I have no idea where these lots might be, whether they exist or not. But this would be a thing that could be done, I think.
Well, you look at the old pump station up there. That's a beautiful building. That could be made into a bunch of units there. And you could have some tiny houses around it.
You really could, couldn't you, Bob? You're absolutely right with that.
Jed, how close are we to the thirty-five percent?
It's right next to our waters.
I don't know. I don't know.
Tiny houses become trailer parks.
Well, that's...
Yeah, Kim and I are looking into that, into the seasonal community designation.
Somebody must have looked to see that we're not eligible, we're not automatically within the seasonal housing.
Yeah, the Cape Cod Commission, not recently issued, or I'm forgetting if it was the Cape Cod Commissioner or the state, issued a press release indicating certain communities made it. In fact, I think we heard it at the One Cape Summit that we were at. But Falmouth was not part of that. And then, there was debate on, like, well, how do we apply to get in? And, you know, there just weren't answers yet, because the Affordable Homes Act is brand new.
Why would we want to get in?
Right. What are the incentives?
Right.
What could be some drawbacks?
Well, if you're in, tiny homes are a requirement. It's not an optional. It's a requirement.
Right.
The rest of the stuff that's in it appears to be optional, and it doesn't appear to come with any money. So, I'm wondering what would be our incentive to apply?
Yeah, and there's a little bit of confusion on tiny homes, because as of right now, if you wanted to build a four hundred square foot home, you could do that. It's just people aren't choosing to do that.
Is one incentive where you have two lots and one that was not buildable, but with this seasonal incentive community that now becomes buildable?
Right, so, yeah, there's...
So, that's an incentive there.
Right. They provide for that in itty-bitty pieces of land that are kind of scraps. Now, you can put tiny houses on it.
Yes, but you would have to have, it's almost like transfer of development rights. You would have to have five other lots that you're merging with it to get that, unless they're going to change the zoning and say, no more one-acre zoning. It's going to be ten thousand square feet or five thousand square feet. Tiny lots, to me, doesn't mean anything unless you're changing the zoning, too. I don't see, what difference does it make?
I suspect with, you know, it sort of makes sense in my mind, anyway, that, you know, if you're designated as a seasonal community, you're saying, in the summer months, let's say, we're just, we're, we have so many people coming in here. And so, the state says, well, all right, if you've got all these people coming in, you need to house them. So, that means we're going to give you every available option so that you can create a bunch of housing so that when people come in, they've got a place to live.
Summer workforce housing.
So, I think that's the general principle. But more to come, because this is all brand new.
But it's not going to happen to us, because we would have to apply. So, it would take an affirmative action here before we would have to really delve into it.
Correct.
Who applies for that?
Well, it would be...
Would it be the select board?
We've been looking at it. We just discussed it at our last meeting, and our question was, what's the catch? You know, what's it make staff have to do? I noticed that there was a couple of items that had reporting requirements, and so, we didn't make any action on it. We just kind of thought about it and talked about it the first pass. And we asked the staff to look into more, you know, what are we on the hook for if we go for it?
Well, and you want to really know, what's your incentive to do it at all, not just what are we trapped into?
Well, I think the incentive is kind of not in our face tonight, but it's, you know, how many people are living in unsafe conditions? Like, I just envision there's probably a lot of young people living six, eight, ten to a house. I don't know for a fact of this, but I imagine that this must be happening because it's so hard to afford to live here.
Some of our families have been living in people's basements.
That's what I'm saying, yeah. So, that's unsafe. You're safer in a trailer than you are in a basement with no egress if there's a fire, and you're potentially sleeping next to an oil burner that might not be vented to the outside. You know, so, that's the urgency. It's just, but we don't see it. We don't, it's not in our face.
And some are living in their cars, too. We read about this all the time.
I camped out over summers between winter and summer rentals when I first came here.
Paul?
Yeah, we've talked about this before. Falmouth is a very unusual situation where we have the science community in Woods Hole. And then, we talk about affordable housing. The students and researchers come in and say they need housing. Well, some of these institutions, Houre, for example, have land. They have housing. Housing was approved by this board in the upper campus. So, maybe there should be an encouragement also, in this case, to reach out to a public-private partnership with some of the scientific institutions that might alleviate some of those things, which benefits their students and researchers as well.
Well, public-private partnership means that the town will be appropriating money for this purpose, either from Community Preservation Act money, if they could do that, or just adding it to the budget that housing is so important, we're now going to underwrite some of it in partnerships. Do you remember the proposal, I think it was Mr. Glasso's proposal, for housing up by the depot? And it was similar to the housing that actually got built across Fort Point Channel in Boston, where the apartments are very, very tiny. And I don't remember the square footage, but they were so tiny, they were doing lofts to get in extra beds, kind of thing, really very little ones. But they had, in addition, on the ground floor and not only on the ground floor, they had public meeting spaces. So, everybody in the building, plus their guests, could now come down here and be in a lounge, or any amenity you wanted to have would be there. But the actual living spaces are very tiny, so you can fit in a lot of them. And that actually was, do you remember the proposal?
The EDIC is still working on that. They're trying to renegotiate their lease with Mass Department of Transportation to allow for that. Because right now, what they have for lease only allows them to run the bus station, I believe. So, they're trying to change the language in that to get permission to do that housing.
The immediate abutter really didn't want it to happen.
There's a few abutters that don't. And, you know, there is a lot of traffic on that road, so they might have a legit complaint, but, you know.
But it's ideal for workforce housing. And would be tiny, but it's all sort of in one building.
There was something that got mentioned, and I forgot what I was going to say about it, but I think Jed mentioned fifty-five and up housing. And I don't know how that is legal in this state, because to me, that's discrimination. It's age discrimination. And yet, we're allowing whole developments to be just fifty-five and above. I don't think any housing development should discriminate by age, because you could start discriminating by any kind. And you look at the dome there, yep, there's four units of workforce housing, but there's all those other units that are restricted to fifty-five.
Yeah, fifty-five, yeah.
So, I don't see how that's fair. I mean, I couldn't advertise for a roommate and say, I want somebody fifty-five and above for a roommate. That's discrimination. So, I don't know how that...
That's true.
I don't know how the state gets away with that.
I believe that fifty-five component there only is regards to Title V. Because it reduces from a hundred and ten gallons per bedroom, because you have older people, and I think they make it less. So, it allows you to get more bedrooms in. But that's where that comes from. It's a Title V play. They still had to have commercial property to build it. It's not a zoning. It's a Title V issue.
Yeah, okay.
I did the math on that.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I don't know how that's... So, they need to change it.
Do you want to make your suggestion?
I'd love to.
Pat has a thought.
Considering that it's not seven fifteen, it's eight fifteen, and we've got at least half of this agenda to go at this point, if not more. And as far as I understand, we have nothing for the agenda for our next meeting on the twenty-fifth of March. Is that still correct, Jed?
Do you have anything to be carried forward to the twenty-fifth?
We did.
I think so.
Just give me a minute, and I will double check. Yes, there's nothing on our agenda.
Shall we adjourn for tonight and continue with this agenda going forward, since we have a lot of people here interested in it?
Second.
It's a big enough issue, too.
It is.
Yeah, I know. I want to spend the time.
Yeah. I'm all in favor of that.
Okay, so, all in favor, I guess, right?
Well, it's made in second. We're going to have to take a vote. Any further discussion?
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.